Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Carterville City Council to order. If you'll please stand, we'll have an invocation and then the pledge will be led by members of Troop 15 out of Trinity United Methodist.
Let us pray. Loving Creator, source of life, the fountain of wisdom, whose will is good and gracious, whose desire is justice and harmony. We seek your spirit to guide us in the work you have set before us, that fairness and courtesy will be the mark of the civility shown in all who gather here tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Keel in the roll, please.
Kerry Hodges, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Taft Ryan, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our January 21st meeting. Council, you've had these well in advance and had an opportunity to look them over. Now would be the time for any edits or other corrections or additions, and if there are none, then a motion would be in order.
Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
If the motion minutes are approved unanimously, we have a second reading of a zoning and annexation request, Z-15-04. Mr. Menino, if you will enlighten us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you had mentioned, this is a second reading. Application by TPA group, 118 Old Mill Road to rezone approximately 63 and a half acres. Adjacent property owners have been notified and property has been properly posted, and there appears to be no conflicts of interest. Since the last reading, there have been no changes. The only changes that, well, there have been some changes that occurred. There were some conditions that were presented to you and staff, and the city attorneys looked them over and resubmitted them to you. Those three conditions will stay, but the verbiage had changed a little bit. Other than that, nothing additional to add.
Any questions for Mr. Menino at this point?
Mayor, before you proceed with the request, I did want to note, we have two items we wish to add to the record. Staff reviewed the conditions that were submitted by the applicant at the last council meeting. They made some revisions to those. Those revisions have been provided to all of you, and both the applicant and, I think, Mr. Bowen as well. We would ask that those be placed into the record. And also, there was an email we received from the applicant today saying they did not object to the revisions to those conditions. I would ask that those be noted for the record as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lovell. And we'll open up a public hearing, and as we've done at the other public hearings, we'll allow for 10 minutes either side. And again, I will ask that new information be provided. Council has gotten a good bit of information, has heard from a number of people on both sides. There's been a lot of information presented. What we're looking for tonight is new information, not a recap of what we've heard before, not a twist on what we've heard before, but some new information so that council has the information they need before they can make a decision this evening. That being said, I will open up a public hearing for AZ-15, excuse me, for Z-15-04, and anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And again, come on up, Brandon. And when you do step forward, if you'll please give your name and address for our clerk to be included in the minutes, and I thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, I thank you for your time to be here tonight. Again, I am Brandon Bowen. My firm is Jenkins &amp; Bowen, just a block down the road here. I want to report, as you know, I represent a lot of the folks in the Waterford who live closest to this property, a lot of the folks that live adjacent to the property. And we have been trying diligently to get an agreement that addresses the concerns of my clients, specifically what happens to the transition if we have a large portion zoned LI, and then there's not any buffer other than a field without any sort of trees. So, we have been working hard to try to get an agreement, but we've been unable to do that. So, we are all in opposition still, and we would ask that you deny it. I have a few points that I would make, and then I'll turn the floor over. One, TPA group has proposed some conditions to try to mitigate some of these effects, and we appreciate that. There's a problem with that, though. As you know, there is a site plan of a berm that Mr. Carl Luchin's prepared that would be essentially the berm that would mitigate the effects of this facility coming back towards the Waterford neighborhood. We need Mr. Wright's agreement on that, and he hasn't provided it. Because this berm, as you can see, if you've got this, if you look at it, the berm begins on Mr. Wright's property. It has to be built up on his property, or it can't be built on the property that's subject to rezoning. Without his agreement, this berm will not be enforceable, as proposed in the condition. Also, we're concerned about the traffic study language in that condition. The traffic study language would suggest that no new traffic study would be required if it's an office or warehouse use. Well, we don't know who the end user is. I don't know who the end user is. Maybe Mr. McGory will step up and tell us who the end user is going to be, if he knows. But without knowing that, we still submit that you can't do a truly accurate traffic study. And the city's ordinances, as they stand, allow staff to require a traffic study when a permit is actually requested. But that condition would suggest that traffic studies would not be required if it's an office warehouse use. We have a concern about that. That is the real problem here. We don't know the end user. We don't know what this use is going to do to the city. And I ask you to not grant this rezoning, so long as we don't know what the traffic impact really is going to be. Where is that traffic coming from? Where is it going? What kind of noise, light, what kind of impacts is it going to have? We have previously submitted a letter of constitutional objections. We do stand by those, and I'd be happy to ask any question, or answer any questions that you have for me. But our group does oppose this, and asks that you turn it down.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Bowen? Thank you, sir.
Bill Gamble, 495 Waterford Drive. No new information, just two requests. If someone, Mr. Lovell, could inform the audience what these conditions are that were referenced, because we don't know what he's talking about. And my second request is, tonight, when you vote, if you do vote for it, if you wouldn't mind stating your reason for voting for this, the only person that's spoken here on behalf of it has been the pay representative for the developer, but all the other speakers in opposition. So I think we at least deserve to know your reason if you do vote for it. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Mr. Lovell, do you want to send any light onto those?
Yeah, I'll be happy to read those, if you would like me to.
Please do.
The proposed conditions from the applicant, as modified by staff, are as follows. A berm shall be constructed with tree plantings as shown on the attached drawing, provided that the proposed building, once constructed, is 500,000 square feet or greater. At a minimum, said buffer standard shall be in accordance with Section 4.17 of the City of Carterville zoning ordinance. Also, in addition to the berm shown, TPA will extend the berm and tree plantings around the detention pond on the east side of the property, as depicted on the attached drawing. The proposed road will be below the berm, as shown on the drawing. Exterior lighting will be designed and installed so that all site and building mounted luminaries produce a maximum initial illuminance value no greater than 0.20 horizontal and vertical foot candles, 2.0 horizontal and vertical lux at the LED project boundary, which is defined as the Waterford Neighborhood Property Line, exclusive of other ambient third-party light noise. Once an end user of the property is determined, TPA will perform a future traffic study to be provided as part of the city's plan review process, provided the following conditions are met. Number one, the actual use is not office warehouse. Number two, the same traffic engineer, Robertson Transportation Consultants LLC, is used. Number three, the baseline travel data from October 21st, 2015 traffic study is used. Those are the conditions as modified by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. Continue with the public hearing for Z-15-04. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time.
My name is Ted Boone. I live at 40 Galway Drive. We worked unbelievably hard to put an agreement together with the developer and the landowner, and every single one of those agreements has evaporated at the last second. It literally makes me sick to my stomach to, in the end, have nothing to show for all that good, honest work. So for the good of your neighbors and the good of your citizens, please vote this rezoning down. Thank you.
I'm David Sinclair. I live at 431 Waterford Drive. I just wanted to speak, the new information that I have, obviously, everybody's very aware of everything with this rezoning. But I did want to say that the future land use map did have this as residential, and although I know that there is surrounding lands around it that do have industrial, that's no reason to say that this is the best use of this really wonderful piece of property. I had a conversation with my 12-year-old son, who would have come and spoken tonight, but I did not realize we were going to be able to speak. But even he was just beyond himself that the city of Carterville would look to the future and would zone this as a more industrial space, when we've just, we've got some great neighborhoods well within this area that we don't necessarily want to just choke those neighborhoods out with more industrial. So, I pray that you will look to what this decision will mean for your children, my children, our grand, your grandchildren, because it's a critical decision, and I pray that you will make a valuable decision for the community as a whole, not just for this developer who wants to build a speculative facility. We don't know who the end user is, and I just think it's way too much of a gamble. I'm a builder developer myself, so I am pro-growth, but this is not the right kind of growth for our city. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Jeff Esslinger. I currently reside at 602 West Avenue, but I'm hoping to reside at 7 Pembroke Lane, which is in the Waterford subdivision, which is the reason I'm here, to oppose this rezoning tonight. I wanted to, and I don't know that we consider this completely new information, but I just wanted to bring up a point that we need to consider in the larger picture of Carterville, and that is that our city is about to be overrun by an amusement park. I think everyone's aware of that. That's going to be rather close to this whole area, close to the Waterford, close to this rezoning area, and close to our city. And if you think that a 1 million square foot or 500,000 square foot warehouse is going to impact traffic, wait till that hits. And I think we need to consider that impact, that unknown impact, so now we're introducing two huge unknown impacts into our city. And is that what we want our city to be? A suburb of an amusement park surrounded by a bunch of unused warehouses? We're about to build and approve the zoning of half a million to a million square feet right across the street from a half abandoned warehouse? Is that what Carterville's going to turn into? A big farm of abandoned warehouses? That's what it sounds like it's building up to. So in the end, I would ask the city council members to remember two things. Number one, I'm pretty sure the purpose of the city council is to represent a city, and I'm pretty sure a city is composed of citizens. And all of you guys are up there because we voted you there, and all we can ask is that you represent the interests of the citizens as a whole and not a special interest group. Thank you.
How much time do we have, Mr. Lovell?
Two minutes and 24 seconds for opponents.
Herb Upton, Hepworth Lane, number 13 Hepworth Lane. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm along with Ted Boone and 17 other concerned neighbors, taxpayers, and citizens of the city of Carterville. You know, we, business is a necessity for every community, but in business, you always weigh the differences between risk and reward. In this type speculation, without the proper terms and conditions, this is an injustice. There is no risk mitigation that has taken place. We've in earnest have worked with the landowner and developer for over 100 days, spent countless hours doing this, and we have not come to an agreement that helps local business and the citizens, taxpayers, the ones who take care of this community. These are the ones that volunteer in church. These are the individuals that participate in civic clubs. They teach basketball, coach basketball, and soccer, and football, and baseball. We are the community. I just ask that the council members have the discipline and the intestinal fortitude to do the right thing for the city of Carterville. Thank you.
My name's Allison Bentley. I live at 9 Sterling Court, not adjacent to this appropriate land that's on discussion here. But I have lived in the city limits of Carterville for a little over a year. Was in the county, moved into the city. I have a four-year-old, I have a 16-year-old, a growing family and a growing community. My heart is here, and I want this area to stay residential, stay something that could benefit our county, I mean, our city. More homes, we're growing leaps and bounds in this county, in this city. It's such a great future if we can just keep it residential, keep it something that could benefit this city. Dog park as an option? I don't know. I'm just mind dragging in possibilities here. Not industrial. We all know there's industrial right there that's sitting empty. I drive past it every day to go to work as a nurse, and it just makes me sick to know that there's going to be more there, more. We don't need that. We really don't. Please, please object this, turn it down. Let's think of this city as family. What's the best for us? Thank you.
Mayor, that has been 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell.
There's no time left. Is that right?
You may speak, sir.
Thank you. I'm John Lewis. I live in the city of Carterville, and I've lived at 94 Blackfoot Trail Southwest, a long way from this development, but I've lived here all my life. This is an industrial area. It's always been an industrial area my whole life, and Billy's land is surrounded by industrial area. Waterford moved into it. The chemical plant's always been there. We've smelled it all our life. It was there when they moved in. It'll be there next week and next year, so I don't know what else he can do with this piece of property except rezone it and put industrial property there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Waldy. I live at 436 Waterford. Just because there's industrial around it doesn't mean that it automatically needs to be industrial, because industrial is not the only thing around it, residential is. And that's why we're here. And I just want to, I know that you guys want to do the right thing, and I just want to remind you that a vote for this is a vote to affect our property values, to affect our health, possibly, to affect our community. I think of the children that run around in the neighborhood. I think of the adults that walk around in that area for their exercise, and this will directly impact all of that. So, it'll impact our way of living, it will impact our investment. Please consider if this were in your neighborhood, right next to your home, if you had the possibility to vote for it or against it. We all know what you would vote, and we're asking you to vote against it for us as well. We're at your mercy, and we need you. The people that want you to pass this will financially benefit if you pass it, and they don't live there. We will lose big. We live there. You live here. This is our community. Vote for us, not for an outsider. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, opponents have spoken for 12 minutes, and so that would leave roughly 11 minutes and 30 seconds left for proponents to speak.
Okay. Proponents?
Good evening. My name is Joe McGory. I'm with TPA Group. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I just wanted to speak to Brandon's comment about the berm. We have reached a separate agreement with Billy regarding the berm, and indeed, I guess when we make it a zoning condition, if it were to pass, it would be restricted to that. We'd have to demonstrate that when we present our plans, so in that way, I believe the berm will be codified and part of this rezoning. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, everybody. Guess you've been waiting for me. Anyway, I'd like to thank you guys for all the time you've spent on this. I know it's been painstakingly slow, and the only new news I have is that I've tried every which way I can to figure out a way to keep Old Mill Farm. It's one of the three oldest farms in the United States that is continually run by the same family. I'm not going anywhere. I love it here, and if this is the only way for me to be able to keep my farm, it's what I'm going to have to do, because there's no other use for that land. I mean, I've had soil samples, I've had many golf people come here that are going to put a putt-putt. There's no one that wants to do anything with that. This is going to create a lot of jobs, it's going to create a lot of tax revenue, it's going to be able to help me keep my farm, and it's going to solidify Carterville, Georgia in a certain way that is best for Carterville, because the chemical plant's going to be there forever, and it's an industrial area. And if this project goes through, and the chemical plant is over there to the right of it, and it's an industrial zone, what it will do, it will protect that a water river. It will protect the Waterford, because right now in January, we've been actually releasing more water than we ever have in the wintertime. That water goes up the tributaries into the Waterford, and it freezes. Then it gets warmer, and what happens is the land sinks. By keeping Old Mill Farm, the Waterford people are going to be surrounded by a beautiful place. By doing this, I'm going to be able to keep it, and I think it's what's best for Carterville, and it's what's all around it. I mean, I've grown up around industrial, with horses all my life, and I love it here, and I don't plan to go anywhere. And this is the way I can stay, so thank you very much.
Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing relative to Z-15-04. Council, it is up to you for further discussion amongst yourselves, if you have questions of staff members or any of the other two representative parties. When we do get to a vote, we'll do a verbal and a physical raising of the hand vote. So, I put it at your hands.
Mayor, I've got a question of Randy. He may know this. Randy, when we talk about lighting, it can always be confusing, because it's LED or a, and they were giving the wattage out. My question to you, would that be a typical?
We ran that by the electric department director, and he said that was fine. That was typical stuff that they could do on the side.
Shine down.
Correct.
Thank you, Randy.
I'd like to offer a motion. My motion would be to deny this rezoning application.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. There's three for and there's three against. Under such circumstances, the mayor's allowed to vote, and I will vote to deny. So the motion carries. We'll move on to file AZ-16-01. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started with that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an annexation and a rezoning. This is a donut hole annexation, it's completely surrounded by city jurisdiction. As far as the process, when we sent out letters to property owners that included properties that were donut holes of city, actually didn't get responses from everybody. This particular piece of property, we'd been sending letters out to about seven or eight years, they chose to move forward with the annexation and rezoning to the residential zoning district. With that, the planning commission did recommend approval of this, and there have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Any questions for Randy on this item?
Randy, just one. The person filing for the annexation, they do understand if any improvements are made, they understand from the water department sewer.
That is correct.
Okay, they've been notified of that. Also, public works, stormwater fee.
Yeah, there is some flood plain down at the very end of the property. It doesn't affect the buildable area.
I didn't know. I just had that highlighted one to ask you. Thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, the staff will open a public hearing for the zoning portion of AZ-16-01. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the zoning portion of the public hearing and open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of the request, AZ-16-01. And seeing none, step forward, I will close that public hearing, and now, council, you will vote on the annexation portion of 16-01.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimously. And now for the zoning portion of the request. It's all right, Tom. You can step on up here while we're voting, that's fine with me. Zoning portion of the request, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Approved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Tom, come on up. It's taking you so long.
I apologize for my quick moving on that one. I'm a mayor and council. If you remember back in June of last year, council signed a contract with Invoiced Cloud to process our utility payments. We're getting close to the goal update, which is scheduled for February the 8th, which is next Monday. This is for an amendment to change the ordinance currently on file. We currently charge a convenience fee of 2.5%. Invoiced Cloud works hard to flat $3.95 per transaction, and I'm asking that this be as a, considered as an emergency reading, because we are, like I said, going live with our Invoiced Cloud software on the 8th, next Monday. Currently, just to let you know, the average bill is around $200, give or take. If you multiply that by the current fees that are being charged, it's 2.5%, rounds up to about $5 per transaction fee. This will actually lower that to about $3.95 on the average bill.
Okay. And as you mentioned, this will actually be, it'll save people money.
Correct.
It's a convenience thing, it's a web-based thing.
Correct. The city makes nothing off of it, it strictly all goes to Invoiced Cloud for doing the processing.
And this is, we're asking for an emergency reading on this, so we will vote on this this evening. If there's other questions for Tom, or if there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. Ms. Reed, you've got some appointments to the DDA.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have two vacancies on the Downtown Development Authority Board that we are looking to fill with appointments. Both of the candidates that we have in front of you are citizens of the city, and one Both of the candidates that we have in front of you are citizens of the city, and one of them is a downtown business owner. We are looking to recommend Mary Ann Henry to take over Jim Baloo's term, and Pamela Wilson to take over Bill Chandler's term.
Thank you. Any special questions? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Grove?
Yep, there are two times a year that we move meetings, the morning meeting, one's when it conflicts with Christmas parade, the second one is Civic Youth Day, that is on March 17th. Passage of this resolution would move that to a morning meeting, so you can participate in those activities. I recommend that for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, you've got the next four, I believe?
Yes, Mayor. First one is the hotel motel tax increase. It's a resolution that City Attorney handed out. Basically, it's working with Bartow County and the surrounding entities, and looking at increasing the hotel motel tax from 6% to 8%. This resolution just makes a recommendation to the state legislature to authorize us to do, do that recommendation.
Now, Dan, most of the cities around us are already at 8%, is that correct?
That's correct.
Anyone else still at 6?
There are some that, like Cherokee County's at 6%, but there's no real hotels in the county, Cherokee County, you got C's.
Not in 75.
I-75 corridor, as the mayor alluded to earlier, are mostly at 8% already in the state.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, a motion.
I'm gonna offer the motion, but I do have one reservation. There are folks who live in motels as, at an economic necessity and that hardship.
If there, once they stay a certain amount of days, that, that tax is not collected.
I understand that, but there are some who do it on a very temporary basis. But I'm gonna vote for it and ask the motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, Dan?
The next item, Mayor, is the Geo Hydro Engineers. It's a company we used before for St. Cole down at Cook Street. We're now looking at some adjacent property for the fiber building. This first piece of property that I look at is adjacent to the MEAG substation, and if that site does not appear to be valuable to us, or potential issues, we're wanting to look at the adjacent property on the southern side of our Cook Street property. There's a couple different pricing within. The first field exploration report is $4,160. If they have to go to the other sites, another $1,200, they may have to use some additional drilling, so we're requesting approval not to exceed the price of $7,500.
Any discussion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next item, Mayor, is the Barracuda Email Archive Annual Support Agreement that we have. It's $7,348, allows us to maintain those emails for five years, as required by state law, and it just, because of annual maintenance, we have to pay, so I recommend approval of that.
Any questions or discussion on this item?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one, Dan?
The last item, Mayor, I have is City View Software, Planning Development Department Requested Purchase of This Software. We've worked with Randy Manino and his staff, and the IT staff, to look at this proposal, and to bring the cost down to affordable amount. This software will actually benefit that department with permits and licensing also down the road, to be able to have code enforcement, have mobile, be able to track that information and put it out, and appeal its mobile. Like I said, it helps the code enforcement, business license renewals, and everything, and eventually down the road, be able to do that online. A customer can do a building permit online, that's a hopefully goal, once we get this up and running. Total cost with, we have to do some memory, additional memory server for the computer system, total cost for the software and their travel costs is estimated to be $102,021.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
I apologize, Dan, I missed the work session, but is there any, do you have any idea on how long this could maybe be a viable software?
Immediately.
No, but I mean, how long will it?
Hopefully, to the next four years.
Yeah, they've, they've been in existence already for 10-plus years already, or more, I don't remember exactly when they have, but they've merged with Harris, who owns Cogseal Utility Software, so they've been around for a number of years. And so, we anticipate, and Cherokee County, actually Connie and Randy and their staff went over to look at Cherokee County, they've been using it, so there's other places that have been using it, which is a good sign that they get benefit out of that product.
I missed a perfect question.
That's okay.
Any other questions? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Mayor, Counsel, this is a grant application, we're seeking permission for the mayor to sign a cover letter, and the, all the associated documents with a, for a local maintenance improvement grant from Georgia DOT. We get one of those every year that we use for resurfacing. This is a supplemental issue that they just came out with. It's the first time they've had a supplemental issue in the middle of the year. The grant does require a 30% match. Since we didn't anticipate this grant being available, we didn't budget for a match, so we're gonna fulfill the match with in-kind services. We're gonna do crack fillings, sidewalk maintenance, and patching on the 52 streets that are included in the grant. The grant's gonna put thermoplastics striping on 52 city streets. Thermoplastics are a lot thicker than paint, and therefore it holds the reflective beads for a lot longer period of time. It's especially effective in the rain, and the grant is for $295,167. The in-kind match would be an additional $88,550.
Rebecca was amused at the fact that you had that in the picture. Only engineer would really appreciate that. That's different than regular paint, though, isn't it?
Oh, yes, it's significantly thicker. I think it's 10 or 12 mils in thickness, and the beads, the reflective beads are, are a lot bigger.
Is there, is there a heat process when they put it on, or is it just painted?
It may be about six mils. It's, yes, it's melted. It's a, it's a, it's, it comes in bags, like a powder.
But you can tell the difference when you see it on the road.
Right, and they put it in a melter, and, and, and apply it down at a very high temperature, almost 500 degrees.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Bob, you've got the next two, and then we're gonna add yours after, so we'll save you some steps.
There we go, thank you. Good evening, everybody. First up, we have a issue at an Atco with a sewer. This is on Ohio Street, it's a line that's given us problems over several years. Just kind of as a point of education, the sewer lines in Atco were put in privately, so they're not built to modern standards, and what you do is you look at that service area, almost every sewer line sits right up against the back of a house. They run under driveways, buildings. For us to keep fixing this, or to do a fix in place, like a pipe bursting project, would repair the immediate problem, but we would still have a line for the next 100 years that's in a place where we can't work on it. So what we'd like to do is to start the fix by having this engineering survey done, that will allow us to move the line out either into the alleys or the streets, giving the folks that come after me the opportunity to work on it without collapsing a house in on top of it, or digging up somebody's storage building in the process. So this is the first step in doing that. And what it is, is it's just a, is survey work with invert elevation measurement on all the manholes in this multi-block area. We took pricing from Smith &amp; Smith, they gave us a price of $6,900, and would recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Any questions for Bob on this item?
When was that system put in?
Roughly around 1905 to 1910, give or take.
I was gonna say '07.
Any other questions? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll take Jason's motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Bob?
North Irwin Street. You're aware, over the last several years, we've been digging up North Irwin Street from one end to the other. This is the last 2,200 feet of approximately 1880s, 1890s vintage pipe in that long leg. This would roughly be from Aubrey Street to Porter Street, just to kind of give you some landmarks. This is the engineering portion of that fix. We took bids, Swites or Engineering returned a bid of, a not-to-exceed bid of $34,500. Seems very reasonable, and recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Any discussion on this? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye? Motion carries, I think unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Don't move. Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Item is added. Go ahead, Bob.
Our Center Road pump station is a dual pump system. It pumps to the tank on Center Road, 3 million gallon, high-service area pump. We have one pump that is failing on us, is blowing water, and that's kind of the, the first sign that it is about to go, go bad on us. We, we are going to have to remove that pump from service, send it out to the manufacturer to have it rebuilt. And what that does is that puts us in a situation where we cannot service high demand or fire flows in that situation, so what we'd like to do is to purchase a third pump that can be installed in the place of the one we're having rebuilt. We will have the current lead pump rebuilt, it'll go into reserve, and then we will have a pump to install as the others fail, and we can perpetually operate this pump station at, at max demand. That requires the purchase of an identical pump to the two that are there, so that it will mate up to the, to the flanges and the motor mounts. That is a Patterson pump, they provided us a quote on a duplicate unit, and that is $9,850. Recommend that for your approval.
Okay. Any discussion?
We're all so pleased that this is not the Archimedes pump.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I like the Archimedes pump.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Counsel. In December, y'all approved a bid for fill lighting for Richard Bell Field and Dillinger Park Fields 4, 5, and 6. I thought I had asked to surplus that equipment at that time, but I did not, so I'm back to you now, asking for us to be able to surplus those lighting systems for that to be on Gov deals. What, what this, what, we won't keep, and we're gonna keep a few spare balances from the Richard Bell Field, and anyway, I asked you to surplus this equipment.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Greg. Sam, you've got our final item, the Visioning Retreat Summit.
Yeah, I won't make this thing longer than we have to. We took, we took Catherine's information, it's copied to you all in the agenda, and I kind of put it in the form of a PowerPoint presentation. What you've got in these first two slides are the goals of the session. There's one that is the, what the department heads thought, that's his first one, and the second one is what the mayor and Counsel wanted to see. Go ahead, flip that. There's not a whole lot of change in terms of some of the substance that's in there, other than just the rank ordering of it, but it's, they're all pretty much the same in terms of identifying those. And the goal prioritization, that's an exercise that she took you all through, you remember? No flash, the water's at the top, and then you've got rankings of the departments, and growth of the local economy, and roads and bridge maintenance, downtown parking, and the always popular Diane Quiet Zones are on there. We did take a look at the, what we wanted to pull forward from the 2015 goals, and there were a couple of them relative to the DDA master plan, the vision, including the downtown surrounding area, there are a couple of action items there. But that one, and then exploring other infrastructure financing, that was relative to the bigger question of water, and trying to break that into pieces, and we'll, we'll try to do that for y'all pre-budget. This is just a list of goals from Friday afternoon. I didn't put any dates with this, these were the ones that were derived from staff. There is some duplication between those and then the ones that you came up with on Saturday. These are, to me, are the ones that we ought to focus on, that are important. The permanent property for Fiber Gas and the Gasoline Building. I did plug in some dates on that, I don't know if you can see them, but I plugged in dates and responsibilities on there, and they're plugged in on the one on your agenda packet. Revitalization of areas in the community, I think that that's one that we wanted to include TAF and Cary in, and have Randy work with them. Of course, another important one is the DEA funding. Try to, in the next legislative session, maybe see if we could morph that more into a state program, so we don't have to worry about the feds cutting us out of it. Develop a combined prioritized list of utility projects, that's kind of an across-the-board thing. We're gonna try to do that pre-budget. Again, the water piece is similar to that one, that's the next one down. One after that is hybrid retirement plan, we're gonna take a look at putting that in place. Another goal is marketing tourism, the resources need to be current, city services and quality of life. That involves a, a number of different functions, public relations, CVB, JDA, and DDA. The vacant buildings, this is the police and fire stations, and possibly the civic center. Gonna assign that to staff, and see if we can figure out a way to, to get something viable in there, a viable end user, rather than having them underutilized or vacant. Comprehensive look at our security in all of our facilities and buildings. Frank and Lamar will do that one for us. Go to the county for Quiet Zones, which I know Diane's already talking to them about that. Future assessment plan for downtown parking, that we'll just have Randy recirculate the old information to Counsel, kind of restart that discussion. Development of 2020 SPOST, we'll probably bring you a recommendation on what, at least a staff recommendation on what we think ought to be in there, and then, of course, Counsel can kind of pick and choose and do what they want with that. The estimated amount of the carrying cost to get Dothaf Ferry to the 2020 list, Tommy's already working on some numbers on that. Which projects to carry forward on the 2014 SPOST, so I sent you all an email this afternoon, kind of adjacent prompting. Dan had already worked this up prior to the retreat, but kind of the upshot of that is there'll be about $5 million after we get done paying off the debt of the park, and I think there are some $22 million in projects that are yet to be completed. That's due to the financial downturn, and the, I guess, the overestimation of the SPOST, if you will. We'll probably schedule that as a discussion item for you all to, to take a look at and determine what you want to use that $5 million for. Enforcement of codes and appearances, this is one that Lindsey brought up, that's, that's an ongoing thing that we try to stay on top of. And then the hotel code violations that we talked about, we'll have a meeting with legal and police and see if there's some kind of way we can enforce that a little bit better. I did add another couple slides, and you all, well, let's flip past this, and that's Hot Topics. Had asked the future vision pieces, and this is just a sample of some of the things that we funded out of the operating budget without any new revenue, and I think this kind of sets the stage for the discussion of what do we want to do after that. But you can see on here, staffing of the newly opened fire station number four, we put 10 folks in there, didn't ask for anything on it, I think that price tag on that's probably $800,000 to $900,000. Funding of library and all community nonprofits, I think we've often said that's probably a mill of tax. Funding of the city's portion, the city-county development department, our, our half of that's $155,000. We're working to get to the money on funding of Highlands 75 debt, and the billing authority debt on Toyo that we paid out of budget, but I think I've seen some figures from Tommy that show we paid about $4 million bucks out of the operating budget on that. Addition of new personnel and functions that were Counsel-directed, I think over the years we've added to planning, we've added to PR... to PR and staff. That's an item. And I was reminded in the discussion at the, the luncheon on Monday, that we actually bought the side of property for Georgia Highlands College and gave that back to the board of regents. That came out of operations. Funding of police vehicles and equipment, the DEA money has gone away. That's another thing that we really did without any effort to local taxpayers, and it's gonna be a big hit. We've gotta pick that up. Bring DEA staffing and expense and housing. That did increase our commitment to downtown without the related revenue piece on that. These are all done in, some of it wasn't in era of flat growth, but since probably the '08 to the '12 time period, flat revenue growth, following sales tax, no effective increase in profit tax, and keeping city utility rates at or below market rates. So, then you've got the last piece, and I know we had discussions with council, well, you know, what does all this look like? We'll try to cost these pieces out for you, and I guess I tend to think of it as a model, the different pieces you can plug into it. The $40 million in the water system that we'll need, engineering environmental costs on Doth and Ferry Road, additional expense required annually to maintain existing roads and bridges. That's about $900,000 a year. Tommy's got some great pictures of the bottoms of some of the bridges that, that might interest you when we get into that discussion. Pitch and shortfall based on the new Gatsby requirements. I know you saw in the financial statement that now the actuary, our actuary had it 80% funded, but because of the new Gatsby requirements, it's 60%. So, there's a shortfall there. Replacement of DEA, as I've already mentioned. Downtown parking solutions, new Cartersville gas locations, St. Cole, the uninsured piece of that, that'll probably come from gas reserves, and we've got those. And then the 2020 list, what's in and what's out. That's probably gonna be the biggest thing that we look at. But if you would, at some point, take a look at the, the 10 or 12 goals that I went through that got assignments of people and dates on it, and if you've got any tweaking that we need to do on those, give me your input on that, and then we'll try to get you something pre-budget that's got the, this model worked up with the numbers in it. So, that's kind of quick and dirty. If you've all got any comments on this time or any other time, let's gladly take mine.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on that? All right. Anything else that needs to come for counsel this evening? There's none. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.